Please come to order and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call and roll.
Deion.
Here.
Rockwellman.
Randorhorst.
Here.
Dan Straylin.
Here.
Eva.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Good. I would like to announce that there will be a policy and planning meeting following the regular council meeting to discuss proposed improvements to the wastewater facility. It was the town cabin planning walkway. I'll move on to number two, the approval of the tenant agenda. Do I hear motion for approval? Deion.
George.
Sports Eva, any discussion? Sign up. All in favor, please say yes. opposed? No. Clerk, call and roll.
Eva.
Yes.
Eva.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Randorhorst.
Yes.
Dan Straylin.
Yes.
Carry on. We'll move on to the public forum. If there's anyone in attendance that would like to address the council regarding any agenda items, please step forward, speak into the microphone, give us your name and where you live, and remember to your comments in three minutes, please. No takers. We'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Approve.
Peterson?
Support.
Randorhorst, any discussion? Sign up. All in favor, please say yes. opposed? No. Clerk, call and roll.
Peterson.
Yes.
Randorhorst.
Yes.
Dan Straylin.
Yes.
Eva.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Motion carried. On to petitions and communications. Number one, the Kiwanis and Miracle Park request. My opinion plainly. Yes, Mr. Mayor. I believe we have members in the audience in nineteen Kiwanis and our local Kiwanis club, and they're here to discuss if any projects are an upgrade to Kiwanis Park. Commonly referred to, at least initially referred to as the Kiwanis Miracle Park request. So with that, Fred or Mike Morgan, Fred, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Fred Craig. Is he going to have the chance to talk?
Welcome, Fred. Fred, thank you. Thank you very much for having us this evening. We really appreciate the opportunity. We didn't expect to be given an opportunity to make a formal presentation this early. We do appreciate it. Mike referred to the other members of our Kiwanis club that are present here, Mike Morgan, past president, and Tim Hall, current president. So if you have hard questions, they're, they're men have the answers and the authority. I'm simply the spokesperson. Yeah, we're very excited about this project. We started talking about it a few months ago, and one of the things we did early on was, was contact Jordan Jenkins, who worked for Bolin, works for Bolin Recreation, Marshall Town, and he gave us an idea of what we might do in this park with some prices. We'll see some of that in the slide presentation. And then we also contacted, I contacted Chandler Nanikovin, and he says, you really need, you really need to talk to Jeanette. So we've had a couple of really good meetings with Jeanette, and I want to give special recognition to Jeanette. I'm sure you all know what a great, great asset she is to the community, and I want to thank her for all the help she's already given to us. And I have an ulterior motive because we're going to, we're going to need her to.
I'm not sure what's going on.
She's been fantastic. So as you could probably tell, what we're trying to do here is put together a project, long-term discussion here on adding equipment, playground equipment to the Kiwanis Park, and we'll look at some of the details. Before we go much further, I wonder if we could go to the, did I do that wrong already?
Nope, I got it.
I, I put in a little video here, and I want to point out that we have some good equipment in our community already. One of the sets of equipment that I'm sure some of you are aware of is out at the sports park, and on the north side of the concession area, the concession building, is a set of equipment that came from Game Time. Well, I was looking on the Game Time website, and they have a nice little video. I thought, hey, let's watch that. I think it's, what, four or five minutes?
There about.
Yeah. Let's watch that first.
We're really excited to have a new playground in place. It's been a long time coming. The kids love it. It's so nice because it's a playground that all of our students can enjoy. The surface that was put in allows our kids in wheelchairs to, to go over the top at any place that they want. Even our kids in power chairs are able to move around wherever. But just to see the smiles of the faces from the kids from three all the way up to 22 has just been amazing. Our teachers are happy, our parents are happy, even our therapists love it. You know, to be able to bring the kids out here and to have them work walking up and down inclines. It's a nice place for our families to come now, and siblings are allowed to play right alongside each other because everybody can access it. So, I mean, it's just been a fantastic thing, and I'm so appreciative of the folks that listened and designed something to really meet the needs of the kids that hate it.
I think that was short and to the point, but I think you get the, the idea there that what we'd like to do is, is add some equipment to the Kiwanis playground that there's some that exists already. And we, we contacted the Miracle people. Miracle, by the way, put the equipment in at Lincoln School. So if you want another example, you should go look at that. And this is, these are some of the pieces of equipment that are suggested by Miracle. And these are just suggestions at this point. When we get to the time when we're going to actually choose the equipment, I was talking to Mike and, and Tim, I think what we'll do is engage some people from Christian Opportunity Center and maybe a special ed teacher from the community school district, and maybe some parents, and ask them for some input. We don't know. We don't know what equipment would be best for, for people that have disabilities. Our situation as a club is, we have something called a popper cheese stand. That thing generates money. We need to do something with that money. And our board works hard every year to give it away. But we also have a good park that we'd like to enhance. So we're going to use popper cheese money, and this is an invitation to all of you to eat a lot of popper cheese because that money will be well, well spent. My, the moms in my office stay like this piece of equipment, right? Isn't that cool? Something relatively new. We don't know whether that's going to be a good piece of equipment for, for people with disabilities. It could look something like this, but it might not. Jordan also gave us some prices, and these are just examples of what we might spend. This is, this is actually option two, kind of equipment you were just looking at. The equipment itself would be about $116,000. We would do the installation ourselves. Our membership isn't what it used to be, but we think our members plus the community volunteers can do the installation. If we, if we went with Miracle, they would send down somebody to supervise and show us how to do it. So we think we can do the installation ourselves with their, with their supervision. This poured-in-place rubber surface, eighty by eighty for the equipment you were just looking at, that would be similar to what we have out at the Tella Sports Park. If you haven't been out there, I hadn't really paid much attention to it, but if you haven't gone out there, I would highly recommend you go out there and look. It is really nice. By comparison, there's Miracle Surface at Lincoln School, also very nice. That one has the tiles. We call that, Jeanette, that has tiles, that if one of them is damaged, it can be picked up and replaced. This is a poured-in-place surface, and there's also a base under it. I think out at the sports park, the base consists of concrete. Miracle recommends a crushed rock surface with drainage and a curb. We're going to ask some local contractors to give us an in-kind donation for something like that. That's not in this price. But as you can see, just from looking at the prices, the equipment in this example is $116. That poured-in-place surface is $96. By the time you get your base, your equipment and your poured-in-place plus base are going to be similar values. So if you pay $116 for equipment, you may have $116 in your, in your poured-in-place rubber surface and base. So pretty much equal, equal values there. That's kind of what we're talking about. These are just concepts at this point. We haven't made any decisions as to exactly where we're going to go with this. We just wanted you to see what that base would look like, so we just, by the way, this was all put together by an eleven-year-old girl, a sixth grader at, I think, Jefferson Intermedia. I don't know how to do this, because she's on the team too. She couldn't be here tonight, but I thought she did an excellent job. Here's another example of, of, of equipment that we might be looking at. This is Young's Park in Knoxville. I'm sure you've heard a lot about that. I'll be honest, I pulled the Knoxville people. I'm jealous. If you haven't been over there to see that, it is nice. They've really worked hard and done a great job. This is just one picture. Mike and, and Tim and I went over there to look at it one day. They've done a really nice job. They don't have the poured-in-place rubber surface. They've got a wood chip surface, so they're, they're going to have, have more ongoing costs than we have. These are a couple pictures of our park. One on the left would be, I think that's looking from the southeast corner, looking north. Is that right, Jeanette?
Correct.
Jeanette is taking these pictures. And this other one is on the west side, facing, that's facing east?
Facing east, yep.
Okay. All of you are familiar with the park, but we thought we'd put in a couple pictures so you could see that. This is a, this is something that we had Klinger do. When I talked to Jeanette, she told us that she had gone to Klinger a couple of years ago and asked them, conceptual drawing of, of, parking and a restroom. Okay, so here's, here's the tennis courts, right? And up here is the shelter house and the existing playground equipment. Right here, Klinger drew a parking area and a restroom. It's about two years ago, Jeanette? Okay. That project has not moved forward, but we thought since Klinger already had all the data in their system, let's go back to them and, and ask them to help us. So what we're talking about doing is putting our playground equipment someplace in this area, maybe a little closer to the existing playground equipment with a walkway to connect. That's the concept, in that grassy area, south of the shelter house and north of, of wherever that parking might be installed at some point. One of the questions I had is, are there any utilities in that area? There would have to be some dirt work done because there's a pretty good slope to it. The only thing that exists there, I think, is a water line from that water fountain over to the gardens over here. So we might need, if that garden continues, it's a community garden, is that right? Maybe we'll have to replace that water line. But otherwise, we don't see any obstacles to putting that new playground equipment anywhere, anywhere in that area. So if you have any questions as I'm going along, I don't want to go too fast, but I don't want to use up too much of your time either.
Do you envision that you sidewalked it going from the parking area over to the new playground equipment, since it might be respectful? We don't take the wheelchair.
Oh, definitely, definitely. It should be, it should be connected, right?
Extra wide or what?
Right, extra wide, yeah. There are a lot of videos out there of, of playgrounds that are ADA acceptable, accessible, but they involve pushing wheelchairs through wood chips or across grass, and we don't, we don't want that. So wherever the parking exists, there'd have to be a good concrete walk to the playground equipment and preferably to connect the new playground to the older playground. So definitely, yes.
Fred, I have a comment.
Yes, please.
Just for your consideration and Kiwanis Club's consideration. That playground is right across from a tee road coming in?
It is, right there. That's the way you drew it in there, yes.
Just for, we're talking about kids there, and just for safety factor. I know people are supposed to stop at tees. There's probably a stop sign there, chief. But you know, with that playground right across the way, what brings them, to my mind, is Walmart, and things happen. And I'm wondering if some type of barricade or something went across from that tee.
That's not bad suggestion. And I think Jeanette told us that she had presented this to her board, and they suggested moving that new playground a little bit farther back so it would be more in line with the existing playground. Did I hear that correctly?
Correct. And then, and then that would also allow us to connect up, because there's basketball courts there that you really can't get to now. And I know there's a lot of folks that enjoy shooting baskets, and you can't cross that much grass.
Basketball courts right there, yeah.
So, yeah. So they would like to see it a little bit farther northwest, which would get it away from that tee and a little bit farther away from the road.
Yeah.
Do you think then we would move the parking further north then too, so that maybe the park covers in off the street and into the parking lot? Would that be a possibility?
It's a good place from the parking lot.
I love the concept though.
Do you have a timeframe set for this? Right. Funding will be one of our bigger challenges. In a perfect world, we'd say we'd do it next year, but now we need to be realistic, as you can see from the last page of our proposal. Let's just go to that. We're proposing to, let's see if I can get to that page. Yeah, we're proposing to install inclusive and interactive playground equipment at Kiwanis Park, which will meet ADA requirements, be enjoyed by people of all ages, fun, safe, state-of-the-art. But on the last page then, I'll just skip to that. We're looking at, just for discussion purposes, a total cost of about $300,000. My invitation to the city is that we share that cost, similar to what's been done with other projects. And if we have to come up with $150,000, we'd like to have two years to do that. We have some, we have some reserves, so we've got, we've got some popper cheese money accumulated, and we're going to work aggressively to sell a lot more popper cheese. These are our sources of funds, reserves, popper cheese sales. We'll ask for in-kind donations. We'll ask for cash donations. And we're also going to invite a couple people in our club to apply for some grants. We sincerely believe that there are grants out there for this sort of thing. So two years, year 2020 is what we have in mind. That way, we hope that city can budget, feel comfortable budgeting, and we can get our share of the money raised. That's the concept at this point. And, and I present this now inviting feedback, so if you have other ideas or other challenges for us, we're here to listen, so we can have a good public-private partnership on this. But, yeah, the last page in my proposal says, let's think in terms of a $300,000 project. Within the next two years, we'll, we'll raise $150 and ask the city to put in $150.
Well, I have to tell you, I, you know, I really appreciate the presentation and all the planning and all the legwork and everything that's been done to this point. I would not, I think it'd be a, a great use and an upgrade to the existing facility and give an opportunity for kids with special, with special needs, a place to go and play and interact with others, and also get more activity just in that area, just by having, you know, the parking area and those things in there as well. But also, I want to compliment you guys on giving us time to digest it and fundraise and get it in a budget and all of those things. I just can't tell you how often there are presentations such as this that come in and say, you know what, we want to start in 60 days. And, oh, by the way, all you got to do is sign here. From my perspective, I'm, I'm an accounting guy, so, and a budget guy, and it really does help long-term planning and the success and the ability to fund these things if we get a year or two in order to make sure that it works and fits in. So, you know, from my perspective, I truly do appreciate that, as well as your focus on trying to get this done. I think that's a great use of funds. $150,000 is a lot of popper cheese. But you can count on me, though.
I wanted to also say that this is very timely. Last, I, as many of you know, I am a former employee of the Christian Opportunity Center, and I look at a project like this. I had a visit from a current employee on Tuesday, and he was picking my brain because there've been so many budgetary cuts for, for their organization, and that they've really had to try to find things that are community accessible to them and free. And this hits both of those marks, and I'm, I'm thrilled by this because I think, I was thinking of, of our, our conversation. And secondly, Fred, this is a grant writer's paradise right here, and as a retired grant writer, I would be more than happy to shoot some names your way. I'll just send you an email.
Please do.
Because I think there are a substantial number of philanthropic organizations that would embrace this type of thing. So thank you and kudos to your organization. There's a need for this.
I take that as encouragement.
Yes.
All these discussions do eventually come back to, at least in part, talking about Christian Opportunity Center. In that respect, I find that Tella is a very welcoming community for people with disabilities. That's not true of all communities. I know firsthand from having helped COC with certain projects in other towns. But Tella, I don't, to the best of my knowledge, has always been very welcome. We have a sizable population. I think there are a lot of families that live here because they know that.
They do, they do.
And we can build on that.
The other fact that about the Christian Opportunity Center is the residents, they all shop in Tella.
Right.
They are, they are spending their money here. Their families are spending their money here, and they, they really are very loyal, good citizens to our community. But, and I can't even tell you how, this is kind of blowing my mind because of the timely discussion at hand.
Thank you for those comments.
Yes.
So what would you like from us at this point?
I'd like direction.
Say?
Direction?
I think it's a wonderful project. I'm all for it. It's wonderful.
Yep, budget time will.
Year from now?
Year from now?
March.
It will be at the spring for the following year.
Yeah.
Okay. When we'll officially talk about this proposal during the budget process, will be during our work sessions in February of 2019.
Okay.
So the timing is great for us too.
Our primary contact is Jeanette. Am I correct on that, or should I keep in touch? I mean, she can complete copy anybody you want on our communications.
I'd funnel it all through Jeanette.
Okay? Is that okay, Jeanette?
Hi.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Really appreciate your time and support.
Thanks for your, for your, for your.
All right. We'll move on to resolution number one, resolution number 5921, titled "Fixing the Date for Public Hearing on the Annexation of Certain Land to the City of Tella and Accepting for Filing Application for Voluntary Annexation of Certain Land to the City of Tella and Providing for Notice of the City Council Action." Would you like to explain, please? Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. But I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on the side. And the takeaway here is what this really, resolution really does is simply establishes December 4th as the public hearing date for proposed annexation into Tella. We have approximately 167 acres of land that would be proposed to be annexed into our city. Now, as background, this is application from RDB Holdings. That is voluntary annexation in the geographical area that we have out here just oriented to Washington Street, right up here, corporate limits, and so right around, right up here, transitions to Highway G-28, all works forward. It's up here, the viewpoint subdivision right in here, sports page, bar and range right here. The area that we're talking about with the 167 acres is this green highlighted area right in here. Let's go ahead, please, Cory. I listed up on the big board a council order to approve this resolution. Really, what this would do is set the mechanisms in place or to start the process for the voluntary annexation to take place in the key dates that we have. I'm listing up here on the big board. But once again, the key takeaway is December 4th would be the public hearing date, and at that time, the city council would take formal action on the application to annex into the city. So in essence, it would be discussing the council through this resolution on December 4th is proposed annexation in the city of the 167 acres currently owned by RDB Holdings. And once again, it is pure voluntary and the proposed public hearing date is on December 4th. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. We want to have questions the mayor and council may have on the side. Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval? Deion. Mr. Straylin, any discussion? Sign up. All in favor, please say yes. opposed? No. Clerk, call and roll.
Deion.
Yes.
Dan Straylin.
Yes.
Eva. Peterson.
Yes.
Randorhorst.
Yes.
Motion carried. On to number two, resolution number 5921, entitled "The Resolution Approving the Loading Zone on the East Side of the 900 Block of Broadway Street." Could you explain this? Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy. But once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on the side. And as the mayor said, with this resolution, we would approve a loading zone designation of the 900 block of Broadway Street. This particular voting zone is being proposed by the Kiwanis Historical Society. It would invite the newly installed or the newly placed, expanded, rather, historic or the newly expanded school de guardens here. We do have a picture of the, of the area on the big board. It is important to note, we did discuss this request at our October 16 meeting, and the city council at that time directed counsel, directed formal action, staff received formal action, which is what this resolution would do. Let's go ahead, please, Cory. It is important to note, once again, that this is being proposed by the Kiwanis Historical Society. With this, what this resolution would do, file a city code of formally design in the area that invites the school de guardens, the northern half of the school de guardens , roughly, shown up here on the big board, for the loading zone area. And with that, we would, the council board would approve this resolution. What the offering staff to do is to place signs in the area designated area. It has a loading zone, which would be in accordance with Chapter 69 of the City Code. So in summary, Mr. Mayor, what this resolution does is formally authorizes the loading zone proposed by the Kiwanis Historical Society. It is the exact same request that we, that we discussed with council during our October 16 policy and plan. And with that, Mr. Mayor, we want to have any questions the mayor and council may have on the side. Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval? Eva.
Support.
Mark Peterson, discussion? Sign up. All in favor, please say yes. opposed? No. Clerk, call and roll.
Eva. Peterson.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Randorhorst.
Yes.
Dan Straylin.
Yes.
Motion carried. On to ordinances number one, ordinance number 950, entitled "An Ordinance Amending the City Code of the City of Tella, Iowa, Chapter 69 Parking Regulations." This will be the second reading. I can read it, please. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. It's important to note that we are talking about proposed parking changes with this ordinance that we're considering. Very important to note that previously, we did discuss this with this during the policy and planning section on September 4th. And overall, we've talked about the purpose of this proposed ordinance. It's in essence to create more opportunities for employee parking in the downtown. And the hope is by creating more opportunities for employee parking, it will open up more on-street convenient parking for weekend customers and for visitors to our downtown. All right, let's go ahead, please. Now with this, there's a few main changes with this that we will be going over to the ordinance. And one of the bigger ones that we have here is a change to the no parking that is currently in place for the central business district, 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. Once being proposed with this change, to change hours from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. of parking, or the no parking restriction to 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. Let's go ahead, please, Cory. Now as far as additional areas that we're looking to eliminate, this what's being proposed, not, not eliminate, excuse me, but this is convert the 12 blocks east, parking spaces on the north side of Franklin Street. From its current description of three-hour parking, what's being proposed is to change this designation to no parking from 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. So it could provide more opportunity for employee parking and review of the three-hour designation. Again, this would be going through on the 500 block of Franklin Street, north side of the street, parking the 12 spaces. We do have a picture up on the big board of the, of the area, as well as the, the green highlighted area on the map. So this is just north of Tella Historical Village. Let's go ahead, please, Cory. Likewise, very similar, as we have proposed on 800 block and East First Street, and that is to convert the 12 parking spaces on the west side of the 800 block from East First Street, with three-hour parking, no parking from 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. Once again, we're talking about the green highlighted area, Washington Street's right here, East First Street right here. Let's go ahead, please, Cory. And likewise, we'll add down here, and the last proposed change is to convert eight parking spaces on the north side of 800 block of Franklin Street, from once again, three-hour parking to no parking from 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. This is a green highlighted area. So in essence, when you look at this, there's two main changes that are taking place here. One of them is to change the no parking restrictions in the downtown area. One of them is to change the no parking restrictions in the downtown area where there's currently six, the second one has a restriction from two AM to six AM. To change that to one AM to five AM, and hours change. And the second is we have three areas that we're looking to convert from three-hour restrictions on parking limitations to no parking from one AM to five AM. With that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation, more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and councilmen have on the side of the... Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
Support.
Support Van Stralen, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no, clerk call the roll.
DeYoung? Van Stralen?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
On to claims, abstracted bill number twenty eighteen, do I hear motion for approval?
To approve issue warrants.
Motion to approve an issue warrant by Skeba?
Support.
Support DeYoung, any discussion?
What is Doggone Parks Inc.?
Name is pretty self-aware.
Drinking fountain from donation.
Yeah, so we had, there's a drinking fountain in South Park that doesn't work for a couple of years, so some folks at Pella Corp got together and got Roll Screen involved, and they donated money for a water fountain, and we got one that has a little dog hole on the bottom.
Oh.
So that was just the best, the best option was from a place called Doggone.
Thank you.
That's pretty close, though. Awesome.
Three hundred bucks.
Got a pretty expensive drinking fountain, yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no, clerk call the roll.
Skeba?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Van Stralen?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carried on to other business. Do any council members have any business that they would like to bring before council at this time?
I would like to invite council members to take a drive during the night down Boss Land and Drive and Boss Land and Way. The lights there have been changed to the LED, and it is just marvelous driving on those two roads. Do you wanna see city money spectacular for a good cause? Take a ride on those two roads.
Would you like someone to stand up and take a bow there?
I just wanna thank the electric department and how well lit those roads are out there. It's just amazing, different.
There you go.
You can see the air farther away.
You can, it's so bright. I look out from our windows, I'm thinking, gee, there must be planes landing at the rest of them. So well done, Nate, well done. Thank you, no thank you.
Any other council members? Let's live out with it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, somebody drives down there every day.
Just one item, we have a very good artist here in town that would like to make a sculpture of the biggest, you know, the kissing Dutch boy and girl, of the biggest kissing Dutch boy and girl in the United States. And I was wondering if, you know, people would have a big objection to that. He didn't want it in a, what should I say, in a bad place, but was wondering if that would be done, what would be a good location? Anyway, he threw that out.
How big is the biggest in...
Well, I don't know, you know, but anyway.
Is this maybe like three stories tall or...
No, but I mean, it's like if you go to Aruba, you know, everybody wants to go and have, you know, the I heart Aruba, and everybody wants to go and have a picture of that. But anyway, this is Joe Hoxburgh, you know, who's illustrated some of the books, you know, that Lois DeYoung Vermeer's done. Anyway, he has some interest in that and said, I should bounce that off you guys and see if, you know, anybody objected to that sort of thing.
That's an intriguing offer, and I think that's something that will be well worth investigating, get some more details, and we'll put it on Jeanette's list.
So where would be a good location for that?
It depends on how big it is.
I was gonna say. Well...
We've got a lot of space, so...
Yeah, well, I could ask him how large he'd like to make it. He just said he wanted it to be, you know, the biggest in the United States, is how he put it.
That's a little scary thinking that that would be...
Well, I don't think he wants to make it humongous, you know.
Like life size or something.
Well, at least.
Riley Gardens has an eight-foot, no.
Well, there you go.
But anyway, I guess I should've asked him what he was thinking of. But I'll see him soon, so...
All right, very good. Anything else from the council they'd like to bring forward?
I would like to just clarify a couple of things. I know there've been a lot of things presented or proposed or talked about either in social media or in the newspapers or whatever regarding the streetscape program and the potential and the design of a restroom in the Central Park area. The one thing that I think can't go unaddressed is the fact that the council and the city have struggled with the restroom question up on the square and Central District for a long time. It's not something that is new to the area, it's been something that has been brought forward, and we've looked at many, many different options to try to solve this issue already to this point. When the streetscape opportunity came up, it was very easy to fold that into part of that program just to look at options. And that is the one thing that I really wanna stress to everybody, that this was a planned conceptual drawing, looking for things into the future, honoring the past, but looking to the future, and designed things that would support the community going forward as well as our focus on tourism and being a welcoming committee, community to everyone involved. This is not a plan that was set in stone. This issue was brought up over and over and over again during the public hearing comments by those that went to the different meetings, to the tent up on the square. It's not something that necessarily council brought forward or is responsible for. We're reacting to what the community has requested. This is, and the other thing that I really wanna point out is, this is really just a small component, a small piece of the overall plan. I really am fearful that with all the hubbub about it, that the whole benefit of the entire plan will be overridden because of two stools and a toilet. The landscape plan is very far-sighted. It looks at making, as I said, a very open and welcoming community for our visitors. It honors the Dutch traditions, and it's something that I think we can't get focused on one small component and throw out the whole rest of the benefit. Now, that also being said, we also, mayor and council, appreciate and encourage input from everyone, whether you agree with us or disagree with us. We really do wanna hear the public input. But again, this is one of the options that is being presented, nothing has been set in stone. So that being said, I will now open up the floor. Does anybody, any of the members of the audience have anything that they'd like to bring before council at this time? After that, you're probably afraid to, right? Seeing none, do I hear motion to adjourn? By DeYoung and support Skeba, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no, clerk call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Van Stralen?
Yes.
We are adjourned.